6:29, let's call our meeting to order and start with the invocation and the pledge. Lord, we're meeting today to conduct matters of business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Thank you for all who protect us at home and abroad, first responders and military, and we ask a special prayer today over the Mathula family as Kelly's father is in surgery and hope for a successful outcome and blessings over his doctors. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That moves us to item three, public comments. Do we have any comments today? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to item four, the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
No second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Item five, new business. Item A is receive the personnel recruitment update. We have two new applicants in the last week for part-time finance, which is very exciting. It was pretty quiet for weeks and weeks. So now we have two new, and we're going to talk about Terra Racer in a minute on a separate item. I'll be meeting with the two of them early next week, so we'll have more information to share about that. We also have two new applicants for city administrator. We did lose an applicant that we, that was promising because he took a job in the private sector this week. But we have two that seem pretty qualified that we also, I'll be following up with them this week. We're still very quiet on the city secretary front, especially with people who have some sort of background in that governmental position as opposed to administrative secretaries. We'll keep working on that and spreading the word. Item C, there's no action required. So we'll move on to item C, consider and take action on the contract with Terra Racer of Growth Accounting. There is no action to be taken. There's not a contract at this time. However, I would like you to know about her. She owned a bookkeeping and tax business for seventeen, fifteen years in Katy. She sold it a year ago and has started a new business doing similar work, but as a fractional CFO. So for example, she works with the Fulcher, sorry, the Katy-Fulcher Chamber, I always forget which order their names is, the Katy-Fulcher Chamber, doing bookkeeping for them. She comes and does their financial reporting and takes care of all of that off-site. So her proposal to us will be to be an off-site contractor, and we'll bring that for council for consideration unless we have the details of what that might look like. So exploring all options. So we could have somebody in-house again, or we could bring you an option to consider an outside third party that specializes in that.
I don't want to interrupt you, but you skipped over B, and I'm a some, I don't want to make assumptions on the, are we not doing the candidate thing? Because we've, we've only got four, or are we doing that and we just missed over it?
I'll go back to that. So item B, the meet and greet, thank you, Courtney. Sorry. No, no, we talked about it the other day. The meet and greet is planned for Saturday, February the 3rd from 2:00 to 4:00 at Anthony's. It'll be a public meeting, but the intention is the narrowed-down candidates, and at this point, I'm expecting that to be city administrator and finance candidates, for council or anyone to be able to meet them, know a little bit more about them than you would get if they come strictly to council and nobody's met them except me doing their bidding. So it'll be a social setting, but again, open to the public, short time, get to meet them. And then we will have a meeting on, it's already on the schedule for that following Tuesday, the 6th. It's the 6th?
Yes, it is.
Where we would take up a personnel matter at that time.
Are we going to give more information on that, or email, or just as a reminder?
Sure, we can send out a calendar reminder.
I mean, you had a time there.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we'll send it out and we'll post it. Our intention would be to send you also information specific on the candidates, but we'll make sure that we are sharing what's legally shareable, since that would be outside of an executive session. So we'll make sure to run that all through with the Olson and Olson team prior to sending out, but we'll definitely get you the meeting information and the names of who we're meeting that day. So item B was Terra Racer, just informational about her. There'll be much more to follow after she comes over. We're going to show her the fund accounting system that we're using now so that she can understand and make sure that it's what she has a perception that it is, and that we'd be able to give us a very solid quote of what that might cost, what she thinks involved, and where we might have some gaps that she could fill, if any, or she might say it's not a good fit for her. So we'll know more about that shortly. Item D, consider updates to the City of Simonton's personnel policy. We made a, I made a request for two council members to help review policies from other cities and recommendations from Olson and Olson, so that we can do, I'm going to call it part one of updating a personnel policy. And the goal is to consider paid time off, probation period, insurance and retirement, and basically who is eligible, how long would you work here before you became eligible, if you were going to earn vacation time, what would that look like? If you're new and on probation, is that 60 days, 90 days, six months? So that we set those terms and know what our unified policy is as we hire new people coming in right now. We had a third council member volunteer to help, so I am not one to turn any information away. So we have a link out, Councilmember Mathula Cox and Budrow are helping go through, I think we have six different policies that came from other cities, and we're going to focus on those particular items to start with, and then the entire recommendation will come back to council for approval. That'll help us negotiate and be prepared with our new people coming on board shortly. Item E, so no action is required at this time. That's inform that we have a committee. Item E is consider and take action to adopt a fee schedule necessitated by House Bill 852. That's the Bureau Veritas Fee Schedule that you see in your supportive documents. It's been brought to our attention that Simonton is not using the latest version yet, so we need to adopt this fee schedule. And the reason that the legislature made the change is to do flat fee pricing by, according to square footage of projects and not the value of a project. So the example is, if we're building, two people are building houses on a lot, same lot, similar-sized house, but one's doing all the upgrades and the marble and the beautiful finishes, the value or the price of that is higher, so they would have paid a higher permit fee or fee schedule. So this sets the standard that it's by the square footage and not by the value. So we do need action on that. We would need a motion to adopt this fee schedule.
I will make a motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
All of this was, I do have a question. All of this was driven from the House Bill 852, correct?
Yes.
Which is really, okay.
Right. We're just coming in compliance with the House Bill. It's already been passed.
Okay.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We will bring that back on a future consent agenda with the ordinance. Item F, consider and take action to adopt a resolution amending authorized representative to Tech Pool for the City of Simonton. This is a housekeeping item for our relationship with Tech Pool. Erica, Melina, and Jennifer Ward were the representatives, authorized representatives, so that is being changed. We have added Kelly Mathula, so the mayor and Kelly Mathula, because she's already the signer on our bank information. We will revise this again when we have full staff here.
Is it a temporary change to be able to tab personnel?
Right, so this is our investment money. That's the protected to Tech Pool investment, and as of now, the authorized representatives no longer work here, so there's not anyone. So this is just pointing. So we will revert that back to our finance specialist and someone else, probably our city secretary, when they are officially here.
Okay.
Yeah. Interrupt. I guess the answer to your question was yes. Sorry, I made that wrong.
That's a, no, crystal clear.
Do we have a motion?
I'll motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, so on to reports.
Mayor, could I just get clarification? Leave a second please, I have a motion.
Item A, sorry, A1, update on the council 2024 election cycles. This is just to inform you that we have agreed with Fort Bend County elections to have voting here on voting days during elections other than the general. So March 5th is a super Tuesday, May 4th is the general election, which we would normally have, May 28th is the runoff date, and November 5th is the presidential. So this is a thing that we would typically do, but just for your awareness, let me know about that. We have not agreed to have early voting here because it would just be too disruptive to everyday business here in Simonton since it's so long. So that'll continue to be in Fulcher, but voting day will be here at Simonton. And there is a calendar in your packet that reflects those dates too. It has, that's the calendar that'll be posted on web. It also has information about when you file for the general election, if you wanted to be on the ballot, and those sorts of election related items. Item A2 is update on the FM 1489 and 1093 intersection. I met with, well, the larger group. So at the commissioner's office last week, they hosted a Keep This Project Moving Forward meeting. Tech Dot was in attendance, a lot of folks with different departments. One specializes in design and roundabouts, one specializes in doing environmental studies, you name it, they were there. They also had the consultant from Kim Lee Horn, who was explaining some of the design aspects. They went through and talked about some fine details about if we were going to move 20 feet or if we need 100 feet in order to clear the building here on the corner, some of the small details that really belong in part of the design. Funding has not been released yet, but so the next step is to take the draft agreements, which sounds like for sure, Fort Bend County and some of the Tech Dot departments have already drafted the agreements that will be required in this project. So they'll be ready to go. They're start, they're going to go ahead and move those forward. And then the, just the short version is, the next step is funding to be released, hopefully, final design, and then it'll go to commissioner's court before we see any action. So probably won't see shovels in the dirt in 2023, I mean, 2024, but I wanted you to know that it is moving forward and it's looking very, very good. The commissioner does still advise that it's not final till it's final. When there are signatures on the pages, we'll know what our liability is, but the goal continues to be that Simonton doesn't have to make a significant contribution, millions of dollars. So we'll keep you posted as that progresses. Any questions about that?
That's where we move on.
There are some updated drawings. I think they probably will change again, but once we have a digital copy that we can release, we'll post that.
Will it take up, currently with the current revision of the drawings, does it take up any extra space or is it within the same roads that we have, area-wise?
It is very close to being within the same space. That is in the intersection now. The group did vote to, there were five versions presented. They chose item four, I think, which is to go ahead and separate the lanes now instead of doing it now, and then in a few years, five years or less, you would have to do the second set of lanes. So it'll be divided here in Simonton on both ends, and then meet back into the two-lane road that it is now until the next phases are done. So the design work is actually being completed from Fulcher all the way to the intersection, and then at the other side it goes together. But they're not prepared at this point to build out the divided highway all the way from Fulcher to here. So it'll be two-lane, separate two lanes and two lanes, do the intersection, and then we'll go back in over there.
Future project.
Right. It's, it's projected to outpace, I don't want to say its life, but their projection is if they build it, then within five years, to build that second set of two lanes because of the projected traffic movement. So it was unanimous to go ahead and go with the project that'll build that now, make it much easier in the future.
It's good for us, bad for Weston Lakes.
Well.
Unfortunately for them.
The design work's being done that will affect them, so that part is good. It'll help that get moving more quickly. And the commissioner is committed to the project from Weston, from Fulcher all the way here, and that there's a grant that's in process, or maybe it's being applied for, I shouldn't overstate since it's not mine, but there's a grant that is in the works to relocate that lift station or the treatment plant that is in the middle of that in Fulcher. So, yeah, that'll be part of this project.
Yeah.
The bigger project, not ours. Okay, item A3 is the ARPA project, expansion of city hall. Ms. Hannah has an update for us, and she brought you some plans?
I did. We have 90% seminal plans. They are ready for review, and we're actually requesting to go ahead and advertise once those plans are approved, hopefully in the middle, beginning of February. Right now, we have it, I think, advertising on the first, and then the non-mandatory pre-bid is set for February 8th, if everything is good with the plans and y'all are ready to go forward.
Say it one more time, non-mandatory.
It's on the, it's actually on the engineering report I gave you.
Okay. Pre-bid, that was a word I didn't catch. Great.
And we would have it here, just in case they had questions.
Fantastic. Do they have questions about the?
Courtney had a question about easement when we were together.
We had the first time. Courtney, did you still?
No, they, that was, that part was revised on that. That was if we decided to expand the driveway any further over to that side, and you can try to pull out of that driveway and you'll see why you can't, but it's fixed on here.
Okay.
That was my question.
Where will you, where will this be advertised? I don't know what a non-mandatory and a mandatory.
So we, we put things onto Civcast. It is a online bidding of grant. We accept paper bids, but you, you download everything from online, so.
Right.
It's, it gets advertised, I think, in the Fort Bend Herald, I was.
Yeah, the Herald.
Okay, yep. And so they'll go, it'll, it'll take them to a link in Civcast where they can just search for the, basically the name, I believe. And it'll advertise for three weeks, and then it'll, we'll, or we'll accept bids here on, I think, the 22nd is what we have slated for, if everything goes to plan. Yep, the 22nd would be here. So we would open bids that morning at 10:00.
Is that open to local bidding as well, or is there?
It's open to, it's open to the public.
Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, Civcast is for anybody who has an email, essentially.
Okay, gotcha.
That's a lot of folks. Fantastic. Did y'all have any other questions or discussion while we have Shannon here to?
When we're, when we're looking at the bids, do y'all compare that against the list of non, was it non-approved vendors for government state projects?
So the vendors and like, how they get, the means of, the main means of method is actually up to the contractor. So the contractor can bid on it, and yeah, I assume there's, there's a list of contractors that we cannot use, and then whenever we actually get some middles, if they have something on there, yes, it'll be there. But do we actually like look at vendors before they, before the bids? No, it'll be after we've accepted a contractor.
Okay. As you're, as you're looking for approval or acceptance, when you're validating them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it is grant money that is being utilized to expand this, is it required that, to his point, it be a specific group that is utilized?
It just has to be public, yeah.
Has to be public?
Publicly advertised.
And it can't, it can't be on the?
We can't solicit bids or pick who we want to be. It has to be publicly advertised.
Gotcha. It doesn't necessarily have to be the cheapest bid, but it has to be fairly compared and it could, and anyone can fight for it.
Right.
Or bid, I should say. Does that answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
Just making sure someone qualified to do it.
100%.
Well, yeah, we ask for stated qualifications, and that is, that is a way that you can actually get rid of the lowest bidder if y'all don't have faith in them, or if they don't have enough experience and stuff like that.
Qualifications?
You get to actually say, you know, we don't want to choose them because of certain reasons, and that is one of them, is that the qualifications are not there.
Thank you so much for bringing out the plans.
You're welcome.
Shannon has had people out here, I don't even know how many times, coming to check, measure, verify, looking at things, getting ready for the process. So it's a lot of work, and we should appreciate that. Okay, item four, broadband grant update. I called the county and the commissioner's office because originally the last mile broadband grant that's been in process through Fort Bend County was to be awarded in September. It's actually been pulled. I do not have clarification about why, but they are rewriting what you're bidding for and the requirements, and of course, the MIFMA's requirements for the grant money. And so it will be rewritten and rebid. A time hasn't been set for that yet, but she was, we're kind of expecting this summer. So it hasn't gone, it isn't dead and gone, but it isn't moving forward at the moment with the contractor because they have not been selected. That's all the news that's available for that at the moment. I know it's sad for everybody since we thought we were moving quicker, but we are still named, and we'll keep tabs on how that's going. Emergency road work for Fort Bend County. Just wanted to be sure and thank Fort Bend County Road and Bridge. They continue to show up for falling trees, any kind of issues that we have, and they went out to the Fort Bend Loop at Surrey where the tree that was in forever and ever and ever in the middle of that roadway had to be taken down. They combed it, and it took a while for them to have room, and they're scheduled that they came back out and paved it. So there is no longer a hazard there in the middle of the road on Surrey. Item six, CPAC update. We had a small group meeting with our Dura team last week, talking about next steps. Are we on track? We are on track and looking deliverable as originally planned in March or early April. They brought with them a, an expert that apparently they consult with quite often, and he has been spending his time working on grant funding that will be available to coordinate with implementation of the items that are recommended. So they're looking a couple of steps out, so by the time we receive the final package, it will also include, these are the things that are being recommended, and here's some sources that could be viable for Simonton or grant made to help us do that. So anything that doesn't come straight out of our budget, sounds amazing.
And that they will help with the grants, if I understood correctly, or they will just point out which ones to apply for?
They will help, and depending on the size of the grant, it, it could need an administrator, but they would help us identify which belongs with which and start the application process so that council could make decisions about how much money is available. Would it be viable for us to be able to afford an administrator and have the money to do the project, those sorts of coaching. If you haven't looked at it lately, recommendations were, preliminary recommendations were added to our webpage in December, so that'll be coming again, but we're moving along to be able to get that to implementation stage. The next meeting of the CPAC will be tentatively on February 29th here at city hall. It's on a Thursday. It is tentative because there is a game plan for election equipment to be delivered that day. If we can get them moved, then we will be on the 29th for that meeting. More information to follow as soon as we hear back from the elections office about that. The Ecode 360 review on item A7, that review, it's moving a little bit slowly, and councilmember Cox made a suggestion that we might schedule a workshop and have the folks that are helping with that come and see if we can't power through a significant amount of the items that are assigned to us.
Doesn't necessarily have to be, like, we can do it like we did on the phone, I think. It's just to kind of run through it real quick so we don't wait till the last day.
Right. We, we want to be complete before March 11th.
To get it out of the way.
We need to make this easier, since they're not really numbered as in the numerical order. I gave you the wrong assignment, but even when you go through it and try to pick, sometimes it just seems a little overwhelming to be feeling like you're the one making the recommendation about it. So if that's the case, and those of you all that are volunteering for that would like to schedule a workshop for it, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Well, a lot of it too, like on the personnel policy. I think there was like three or four of them that apply to that. So if we make changes, we're kind, you're just going to need to tell them to go ahead and wipe those out because we're going to make changes anyway. So.
Right.
I don't think it'll take very long.
Do you all want to plan to do that on evening, a weekday evening, or on a weekend?
I'm good on either.
Weekday needs time of the day. I mean, it depends on what y'all want to do.
Okay.
Is it a possibility to work it in to where we do it maybe 30 minutes prior to our next meeting, to where it's not an additional day? Just out of curiosity, I don't know if that works for y'all or not. Just a suggestion.
I don't care, but it's, it's 30 minutes isn't very long.
I was going to say.
I really don't think, I mean, the ones I looked at, the only reason I made the suggestion at all is because I feel like y'all may have questions that I may not, or vice versa.
No, I agree.
You know, on yours, you may have, you know, you may have questions on mine that I don't think to ask.
Absolutely.
And vice versa. So I just figured it would be easier to, the process of elimination. I think there's only, what, 75? And of those, we only had like 50 of them that we were supposed to answer anyway. I think the rest of them were supposed to go to the attorney anyway. So.
So that would be February the 6th?
Oh, okay.
The, the next meeting.
Okay.
Are you all available with, let's say 5:30? Give ourselves an hour.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah, 5:30. Is that what you said? Yeah.
I can do it.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much, and thanks for the recommendation.
Thank you.
Item A8, updates to the city council calendar. Again, awareness, bring roundup has been set for April the 20th. It will again be on the property next to Anthony's over there. Twinwood has graciously offered to allow us to use their location and are charging no fee for that. Simonton will be hosting the Fort Bend County Mayor and Council Association Dinner on April 25th. That'll be here in Simonton. So no need to travel for the one a year.
Did that change?
Yes.
Or it says May 16?
Yeah, April 25th.
Okay.
An opportunity came to be a month earlier, and since weather is often an issue for us, I jumped right on that. It'll be hotter later in the year. And just an item coming up in a future meeting, we will address We will address the international building codes in the coming months. We need to update that about every three to five years. Currently, we're using the 2018 International Building Code, and we're using 2009 codes for everything else, meaning plumbing, mechanical, fuel, maintenance, residential. So, we'll look at that as a council and bring that in a future meeting. And that is it on my list. And you, Ms. Janey, you have any?
I believe you've covered everything. I still have council packets for persons who are interested in serving in one of three at-large positions, the mayor's office, and two alderman positions.
Thank you. Any council reports? All righty. Did we, I, in what we were sent, I didn't see the calendar and all that. Was that sent, or I missed it? Some items have been added. Like the calendar, there was a finance report that was added because it wasn't ready on Friday, so. So, we didn't send that. They're in your paper book, and then they'll be posted online to. Okay. The second one? Yeah, yeah, we can email you any, any of them, any of them. Okay. And you are going to send the people that have applied for these positions, you're going to send us as much information as you can? It'll just be, these are the people who have applied. Okay. I think we, we, I didn't send the email, so if I could be paraphrasing incorrectly, but I think we have offered that we would send it to council once a week, and we will update it on our website at least once a week.
For the, if you talk, the classification, you're talking about the positions who are going to be open meeting for the finance and city administrative position?
Oh, I misunderstood. I thought you were talking about elections. No, I was talking about. Say it one more time. The, will. What information will we be able to? About the applicants? Yes, yes, I will. So, the payment report? Okay. The summary payment report wasn't ready on the same day that the check, that the payment re, that the.
Oh, I got you.
Council report, yeah. They're both there, but you got the long one by email last Friday, and the shorter one moved after the packet when it was ready today. Okay. Any other items, council? Then we will adjourn at 7:02. Thanks for your time.